Sorry, my paper trail.
Okay, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of May 8, 2023. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Peterson absent. Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Will you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming on a beautiful night. First, we have public comments scheduled, non-scheduled presentation. If anybody wants to say something that's not on the agenda, please come forward. Brian, anybody?
There is no one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Brian. Next, we have approval of the minutes as consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 24, 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration of a special event application from North Oakland Dance Company to hold their dance recite on Sunday, May 21, in the band show. Next is a consideration of special event application from the Kiwanis Club of Rochester to hold music in the park on seven Thursdays from June 15 to June 17, July 27, in the band show. Next is consideration of special event application from Cedar Brook Senior Living to hold the Tour de Cedar Brook, cycling to end Alzheimer's on Saturday, June 3, on the Clinton River Trail, and a review of the current special event calendar. Council.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mayor Protam. Salvia, support by Councilmember Gould. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no business for tonight, no table items. First, we have a public hearing. First is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 annual budget. Before we have this opening of the public hearing, Mr. City Manager, do you have?
As I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Try to keep this brief. First of all, I'm proud to bring forward this new budget for this year. I'm proud of the team that worked on this internally. I'm proud of the city council that gave us clear direction and made sure that we didn't waste our time going through this. I think our three-year budgeting plan has really paid off now. I think we're in a few cycles. Listen, it's really, really worked out well. The finance committee's been a huge asset so that we can bounce things off of them, and it just seems like we're getting into a nice rhythm. It's nice to come here finally and see some black numbers instead of red numbers, right? I think we're proud of staff that we've always continued to try to outperform what we project year to year to year. And I've been in another place that people, councils, staff would pad budgets so it's easier to perform, outperform them, so it made you look even better. I'm proud to say that. I don't think that ever happens here. I don't think you all let us do that. And staff takes it so seriously about our actual charges to make this thing work, be as close as we can so we're not wasting money. Now, there's a couple ways to waste money. You budget stupidly, I'll call it, or you actually know what you're trying to do and you try to outperform those milestones, right, or those benchmarks. I think that we, basically, you can call it what you want to call it, but we heard Councilwoman Clear, Mayor Protam, Salvia, it's almost like a zero-based budget. Every single department head, when we start this process back in September, quite frankly, has said, don't come in, you look at every single number for the last three years, whatever you spent, where can you adjust it? It's not a sum game where you say, oh, my budget was under by 10%, so I'll just shift things. Nope. Every line item, we take a look at and what we can do. We made this year, as a transition year, for me and the staff, we looked at where could we eliminate things that we didn't think were appropriate? So we did that. We cut a lot of money out of that. We also faced probably the, I'm going to say, the biggest hurdle I've seen since I've been here for 14 years, the medical situation. We got hit with a bomb. I think we've called it before, and I'm not exaggerating, you know, well over $1 million that we had to find a way to manage our way through that. Together, we managed our way through that. Together, as we're going through union contracts and all the things that are going to affect our employees, including all of us, then we laid it on the table. You can say transparency is a buzzword. It's not. It's when you do that, it helps smart people get together and find the problem and try to solve the problem. And that's exactly what I think we did between the committee, the city council, the study meeting that we had. We don't have any giant asks this year. Pat and Ken are going to come up and talk a little bit about Van Hoozen. We literally have nothing else to ask for because in our three-year budget, we knew what we need for roads, we know what we need for the parking facility, we know what we need for infrastructure, and we're working our way through. You have a lot of new team members here that jumped up and took this very seriously and looked at their budgets and said, you know, how can I help balance this budget and make sure that we're not going out on a far limb? Every department head looked at what they did last year, and I love Marcy and Anthony for this, the most they hold us responsible. They set a theme, Ready Rochester, for this budget. That means we are ready for anything. Good news, bad news. Right now, the news seems to be getting better because our property values are holding. What we're doing as a community, Kristi, I see you here, what she's doing with the downtown and that PSD and that DDA, we're trying to make this place the still the best place to live in in southeast Michigan. And that will hold property values, which will hold tax base. We know we're going to have new construction coming up. We know we've had new construction come up. And Anthony likes to remind us if people, we move, when people sell their homes, we uncap, right, and we get true taxable value. That helps us. All the new construction goes against Headley, so that helps us get through these trying times. So I think we should all be proud of this effort. You got your books in time. I'm glad to say nobody called me with anything. I know we had a few people that called and said, hey, I've got a couple questions. The team was able to answer that. So I don't think we need a lot of fanfare. We're certainly here for the public has any questions. I think we're good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, and I'm proud to bring this budget. And Anthony and Marcy just tighten this down to every department head, what's your goal? What were your goals last year? Did you accomplish them? That will help me when we do our evaluations of our own employees. And then what's your goals for next year's? How are you going to keep us safe? And how are you going to keep us fiscally strong? All those were done with every single department head exhaustively, face to face, and they made me feel very part of this budget because that wasn't my role before. So I knew the budget, but I wasn't into it. They made this very understandable, and if I can understand, anybody can understand. That's what I tell them. So with that, Anthony's going to present the budget. We have a few slides for you that are high level, and we'll answer any questions y'all might have. Thank you.
Anthony, welcome.
Thank you, Council. So as always each year, the presentation will be uploaded to the website. I'm not going to go over all the words and every single slide and death by PowerPoint version it, but it will be available. If there's some interest, like, hey, what was on that one slide? I want to read more about it. It'll be there for review. As Nick mentioned, the theme this year is Rochester Ready. So we had in every single department, you'll notice something new this year, which is, what are we doing to prepare ourselves and keep connected, thriving going forward? Last year, if you remember, we had the 60-year look back, which we kind of had like a what-happened-60-years-ago budget, some fun facts and information about the city at the time to where we're at now. Now, we're kind of going with the, okay, well, where are we kind of heading and kind of what's going on going forward? So you'll see those in each of the departments. You'll see a way that they're both trying to meet the needs of the community, the core values, the visioning, and then how that's tied in to each of the departments and how they're going to get ready going forward. So that's going to be a theme you'll notice throughout the book. For every department, there is a new ad this year for that. So process. As Nick had mentioned, we have a very, very, it's almost getting to the point where, you know, you say September, it's almost just an ongoing thing all year long, right? So we try to keep through the quarterly reporting, an up-to-date budget every single quarter so that we know where we're heading, what changes need to be taken, and we make those changes then. I liken the process now to sort of like the, sort of like a financial statement, right? This is a snapshot at a time, a place in time, just like financial statements are. This is the quarterly budget snapshot for where everything is at and what we're looking at going forward. And we, between reviewing it, the policies with the subcommittee, looking at things like fund balances, like we did at our Saturday meeting about changing levels and those sort of things, cross charges, revolving equipment, there's lots of bites at it throughout the whole year as we keep reviewing it, making sure best practices are in place and that we're actually following and then making adjustments as we go because we don't like surprises. I know I don't like surprises. Anything with finances, I very much don't like surprises. So as much as we can get ahead or at least identify things early on that lets us steer the big cruise ship that is the city with little tiny adjustments as we go along. So we incorporate a lot of things into the budget books that council has and those at home online. If you download the PDF, it has a lot of extra information in it on purpose. That's where we put the budget policies. That's where we put the schedules. That's where we put the resolutions. We try to keep everything that's relevant to the city finances in the book and in a place you can go to to see what the current version of all of everything is every single year. So it's a nice spot that you don't have to go hunting and trying to find different areas. One of the key things has been utilizing the multi-year. So we started that in 2019. We had not done multi-year budgeting prior to that, but we have made sure that we're incorporating where we're heading, where the dollars are being spent, and making sure that we're aligning with the vision that we start with council, the core values of the city and the different categories for each of those. And then, of course, our SWOT analysis, which is really where we kind of hit on the department level, the actual objectives to say, okay, well, what can we do to strengthen the strengths, look at the weaknesses, make those opportunities, threats to opportunities, weaknesses to strengths, and how do we make sure we don't lose any ground in any of those areas? So throughout the budget for every department, you'll notice in the objectives, what are they tying into? And if you want to look at a summary of all of the different departments, then look at the city managers department because obviously, the city manager's in charge of making, overseeing all of the objectives for all the departments. So in the city manager department, you'll see a summary of everyone and who's doing what and where they are for all of the SWOT items. As we go through the process, we are meeting both with the boards, the committees, council. There's, we have infrastructure committees, facility committee, budget and finance committee. So we're making sure that we're keeping everything up to date on what our multi-year plans are, and as soon as those are approved, making sure we get those into the multi-year budget to see, okay, what impact does it have? Do we need to have address any funding issues? And then, of course, making sure everything is posted and transparent so that anyone at any time, public, businesses, residents, anybody who wants to know about something, it's right there. We don't hide things. It's all transparent. Everything is right there, and we always encourage questions. And if you want, we can go in as much depth as you want to go into. We can go down to the pennies. We can just talk philosophies. We can do all that sort of thing. So we're happy to always take those questions anytime during the year. Doesn't have to be at any one point in time. But the part where we're at now is the public hearing and, of course, budget adoption. So that is our steps that we're at tonight. There's a bunch of statistics. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on that. It's a lot of the graphs on just where does the money come from. Obviously, real estate taxes for this budget is the bulk of it and kind of where the expenditures are. So if you look at the general fund, which is the main operating fund for the city, that is where everything is currently mainly residing. You have the police, the fire, DPW, finance, city manager, the city council, the clerk elections, everything is in general fund. So this is just a breakdown kind of where those things are going. Fun thing to note, and I will bet a dollar on this, we should, this next year in 2024, cross our taxable value, will hit the $1 billion mark. We are now at just $949 million in taxable value. It was about, I want to say, four or five years ago, our assessed value hit the $1 billion mark, but this will be the actual taxable value is coming up in that place. So thank you, Nick, for getting par through and all these other developments because the bulk of this is new tax dollars. That's what the biggest bump of these are, and we hope that continues as we go. We're still sticking in with the resolution, the direction that it's a 0.94 mils is going straight for infrastructure. Right now, that's roads, but it can be, infrastructure could be water, could be facilities, could be, but right now, it's going to roads. And we're making sure that the funding is there to support the multi-year plan on that one. And one other thing I'll note, just with the rates, this applies to OPC as well as the city, because of inflation, there is no rollback this year. So there is no rollback from Headley. It is staying status quo from last year to this year. At the rate things are going, it's going to continue to next year, most likely as well, not having a rollback on it. These graphs here, this is the one that we always like to use as, and I'll spend just a second on it, the one on the right, essential services as a millage. This is where we take the, all the different municipalities, some like trash service is an easy one. We pay it out of general fund. It's just a line item in the budget. But if you're in other cities, you get a bill from the trash hauler, and you're going to pay monthly, bimonthly, quarterly for your trash services. So what we do is we try to say, okay, if you need trash, police, fire, water, and we need to take all those, we turn them and convert them into millage rates to say, okay, what is, if everything was a millage rate, what does that mean in each of these municipalities? Because a lot of times, they'll just tout, you know, we have the lowest general operating millage. Well, that's in a silo true, but what is the real cost of living in the community? And that's where we try to equalize this. And as you'll see on all the right graph, all the communities, Rochester is fourth in lowest for essential services in the city. And I think all of us know, and anybody that's been here for any length of time know, that we have tremendous value in the services that we provide for a rate that you're not touching in any of the other comparable near communities.
And Anthony, I, just as a preview, there's a potential that that slide could show up Wednesday at the State of the City. Just saying.
Foreshadow.
Getting ready.
And it is that important, too, because it really gives a whole picture, understanding of what you're getting in various communities. So it's definitely something to keep in mind. New this year is the OPEB pension percentage funding graph, or maybe last year, but it was, this is a new one that we replaced some old outdated graphs with, right? Budget is fluid. We want it to not keep things in there that are stale, that don't have any meaning, so we add new things that have new meaning into the budget. So we're still looking very healthy, even with the fantastic year we had in '22 in returns and investments. I say that very sarcastically. We're still at 145% from 184 and 99% from 104. So both trusts for OPEB and pension are still very, very good shape. And multi-year budgeting, nothing at this time needs to be addressed with either of those. They're being managed with the retirement board very well. As Nick mentioned, we're now at, what is in the bottom-line numbers in this? Happy to report that as we're looking now, it's been the first year since we've done multi-year budgeting where every single year is in the black and not in the red. No negative numbers now in these, which is really good news. We're always monitoring it. We're always looking at what's happening, what's changing in the landscape, what we're hearing from Lansing, the economists. We're taking all the information. We're going to make sure that we stay on top of that as we go forward. Council may or may not remember when we started multi-year back in 2019. That third year out, you know, the peak was a red number of $1.2 million, right? And that's where saying you can't change the city on a dime. It takes a while to make adjustments. The multi-year budgeting, planning, forecasting, it works. And this is an example right there of why you do these things. You can see through budget year after year since '19 and on, how the changes have been made and where we're getting to where we want to go. Council set us the direction, and we're getting there, and we're making very good progress. So it's your direction. It's all the department heads making sure they're up to the task, and they are to bring you and deliver, and that is what we have done. And we're going to continue because it is a never-ending, never-ending saga. You never finish a budget. You just kind of keep going. Not included in the budget, so here's a few asks. I know Nick mentioned for the museum, they're going to talk tonight, so I'm not going to go into that. You'll hear about their requests and what they're looking at. We've heard a little bit before, but that's not in the budget. From the general fund, the DDA has put in a split for it, so they have their part in the budget. We have it earmarked here because we need council to give us the okay to do that. So it's not in it, but that could be amended at any time tonight to the future. It's real simple, no big deal on that one. So, infrastructure, big topic. This is one of those slides where if you want to see more, please pull it up on the website. This was what was approved by city council, the multi-year plan. And in the budget, we have funding in major local streets and water and sewer to make sure we're funding the plan. So we're in good shape from there. We're working through the process for the two all abilities parks that council's approved. Lot of steps to get through it to actually, actually get to the point of actually putting a shovel into the ground, but we're staying on point with that, and we're going to start breaking ground this summer. Also, in each of the departments, you'll find cost savings objectives. So one thing we challenge each department is, you know your department better than anyone else, where are some areas for cost savings? Where are some things you can do to look at? So there's, every single department has at least one objective for cost savings, whatever it may be, could be something small, like going paperless, or it could be something big, like change insurance. So you'll see that throughout the budget for every single department. That's become a normal every year, what's this year's cost savings? And then, of course, when we do it, we have to look back to say, okay, here are a bunch of objectives you said last year, including cost savings. Did we do it? Are we still on track with it? Did we accomplish it? And we have those as notes. So I am not going to read the new slides. So ending the process then, so that is the presentation part. Questions that can take now, and then we'll have mayor, of course, we'll have the public hearing for that part of it, but here for you guys.
Questions. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, Anthony and Marcy, you know, this process, being on the budget, infrastructure and facilities committee for four years now, thinking back to how many meetings we had two, three years ago, to how seamless this really is, is really a testament to the finance department and city administration, as Nick said earlier on. And, you know, as we meet in these meetings, infrastructure, facilities, and budget, and finance committee, to see it all come together like this, this year seemed almost surreal, like, are we missing something? Did we, did I miss a meeting or something like that? It really was put together very nicely. But one of the things we did talk about in our budget meetings was, not that I want to take away other people's Saturdays, but we had the one Saturday meeting, and we used to do a couple of those. And perhaps next year, you know, we have a second bite at the apple where maybe the department heads can come out and do a little bit more. You know, when we meet at the firehouse, we had the one meeting for like three hours or so, but I think a second meeting from that, we see it, Nancy, Marilyn, and myself and the budget committee, but I'd like all seven members of city council and all the department heads to also be there. You know, we're all about transparency. You've said that. We are that. So I would just make a recommendation. I won't be here next year, so I guess I'm committing you guys to a second Saturday meeting while I'll be up at Michigan State tailgating, so we'll go for that. But no, I do think it would be, it'd be time well spent, and it would give us a deeper dive into the departments than we had this year. So, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Mayor Protam, Salvia.
Thank you. Thank you. Quick question. So on this slide, we show the positive, the good news, the $83,000 for fiscal year 2024, and then we have budget requests, fund balance requests of the $30,000 for the Rochester Hills Museum. I know there was some that was coming from the DDA. Is that in addition to the $30,000?
The, so the $10,000 is the archiving, if I, spoil alert on that. So we want to continue the archival process for the $10,000, so that's still in there.
And that's in the historical numbers, right?
Correct. And the request was 40, which includes, so there's 30 new, and then DDA took half with the 15 that they have in it, so then the ask of new dollars would be 15 to general fund.
Okay, so total asks here, if you take the 15 out, it's about 90. It totals to 111. It's about 90, but we only have.
The, I think that's the missing piece. Yeah, that's in.
The green's already in.
The green's already in, okay.
So these were the asks, and that's where we look at the policy, like bulletproof vests, right? We've said if we, if it's mandatory, if we have to do it, it's just going in the budget. We're not going to, you're going to know it because we're going to have a note about it, but it's not something we're going to say, hey, can we please have money for vests? We have to do the vests. So you'll see it there, but it is in the number. So the only thing in the ask that isn't in the budget is that 15,000 for the museum.
That would come out of the 83.
We got plenty of money. Okay, good.
So take the 15 from the 83. We're still, we're still.
Good. We're still to the good.
Correct.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, this was the first time round for me with going through the budget process, and I found it very, very interesting. And you and Marcy did an excellent job of explaining things. I'm not new to numbers. I have to run a business, so, I mean, this was absolutely stunning, what you have to put together and how well you did it. And I just want to thank you very much for doing this. It was very well done, and I love the idea of themes. Ready Rochester, it's right up my alley.
Thank you.
So Anthony, are we going to have the public hearing and vote on the budget, or are we going to hear from Mr. McKay first?
It's your choice for it. Since this is an ask in the budget, you may want to hear it, but it's up to you because we can pass it as is, and then the amendment can be tonight with it if so chose.
In the past, I think we opened, sorry. We opened the public hearing, that was the public asking for it, and then that's how we did it in the past.
Yeah, and we can do both right together. For sure. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions for Anthony?
Okay. I will stay close by.
All right. So at 7:28, we will open the public hearing on the 2024 budget. Anybody would like to come up and speak? Pat? Come on up. I think, yeah, you got to use.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
On the hills, you guys sit down when you do stuff.
Yeah, it's the hills, you go to the table.
We're all about standing and get calories.
Got to work for it here.
Get your standing in.
My name is Ken Howard. I'm the director for Parks and Natural Resources for the city of Rochester Hills.
Welcome.
Pat is one of our, one of our team members, and we're grateful to be in front of you briefly. I know Pat was already here before, and I just wanted to give you a brief overview of a few things. Thank you for even considering this. We think it's a great partnership to support regional history all the way across the community. And so, again, you've seen Pat's request in our two-page proposal, which already includes the archivist funding, where we've already worked towards your specific materials, and that's been an awesome partnership, and thank you for that. I just wanted to give a little backstory as to why we're doing this now, right? So, you know, we've been going through a strategic planning process, excuse me, process in our department for about, almost over a year now on this, and one of the, one of the focus areas is partnerships and cost recovery. And one of the, one of the focus areas is partnerships and cost recovery. And you know, as we run the museum, um, it gets more and more expensive for seasonal labor for these archivist programs, for the programs downtown, a variety of things. And so we're, we're looking for ways to to partner, to make sure that we can continue to provide those services. So it costs us about a million three every year to run the museum on on that. And so um, you know, we thought this was fair to to come in and and partner. We we believe honestly, probably 10% of our visits probably come from Rochester. Um, we we don't have numbers to back that up. Honestly, we could get them. Um, and and we're not asking for that, right? We're not asking for a 10% um, funding model, but I I think a a partnership of um, like this, where we all recognize the value of local history and the value that Pat and his team bring to that and and the museum facilities is one that is appreciated. So I think I'm not going to say much more. You've already seen the proposals. Um, we're here primarily for questions and um, I know Pat's already had his say um, at the at the first presentation on that. So primarily, we're here for questions and um, I really appreciate the opportunity of the partnership um, and uh, we'll open it up.
Councilmember Albert.
Um, I'm a huge supporter of the museum and and would support this. Um, is this something that uh, is going to become an annual ask, uh, or is this a one-time ask?
What we proposed is actually a a three-year. Um, so it's, it's every year for three years, um, Pat and his team at your preference could come or give an annual report um, to um, you know, tell what we're doing, how it's how it's affecting the city of Rochester, how it's affecting us, just history in general of of the region and that. So the intention was a three-year agreement that would be um, you know, requested to be renewed at that point.
Thank you, Ken.
Councilmember Trent.
Uh, yes, I'm a big fan of the museum and all that Pat has done. And then I've seen all the things he's done for our city and I just wanted to thank him and you and and the city of Rochester Hills for being generous as you have over the years.
Thank you.
Any comments? Thank you for coming and we kind of feel like Pat's part of our team as well. So thank you for coming.
Do you want to say anything briefly?
Come on, Pat, while you're here, come on.
Tell us some history.
We want more history, Pat.
Tell us something.
At a loss for words, but I'll blame it on Krista. I mean, we just, we just met last week with, we have another crazy idea. Well, she has another crazy idea that I'm going to try and support, but it's, you know, we just want to be that partner and and I I think we use that word over and over again. And we find that partnerships in our community work great. Um, the library is a great example. OPC is a great example. The Pink Trail is a great example. And and every time we see this partnership where communities are working together, it works phenomenally well. And I, I, we understand transparency. We know all those, all those words and and I I think from a municipal government and two communities working together, I think this is a win-win situation. So we'd love to be part of it.
Sure is.
So thank you for letting us come tonight.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there any further public comment on the budget tonight? Okay, at 7:33, we will close the public hearing. Council.
Yes.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a small, minor amendment uh, that I'd like to propose to council regarding the historical commission. So in the past, uh, the historical plaque markers for homes that were built in 1950 or older, um, we had a program where a plaque cost about $150, of which out of our budget, we also subsidized half of that cost. The, it was contained within the historical commission's budget. That uh, that plaque now has doubled. Um, and we're, we're getting the same amount of applications each year, but we're getting reluctance for anyone to actually buy the plaque. So I'm going to make a proposal to increase the historical budget from 1706 to 1906 to cover the cost of what we would anticipate on an annual year, applications for those historical plaque markers.
17,000, 17,000?
2,000, correct.
2,000, okay.
Is that Mr. Anthony?
I am making a note right now to make that change. So if that council chooses, not a problem because then what will happen is we'll make that as an approval for part of the budget and then I'll add that in as a line item as a note for the additional 2,000 for the uh, the increased cost for the markers.
So with the budget we're voting on tonight, would that include the Pat's request and Councilmember Sage's request?
If council chooses, yes. We can make that happen and I'll add both in and that's that easy.
Yeah, in the motion, you could say as presented by staff plus.
Plus the two.
The two, if there's more.
Councilmember Gould.
Yes, this question is for Councilmember Sage. How many plaques would that equate to?
Uh, we roughly get, I would say in an annual year, 15.
Oh, okay.
So I I don't know that we're going to use the full 2,000. Um, it's just to to cover what potentially could be, uh, because we know, we were very successful when it was a 50-50 proposition, uh, city and resident. That changed when we made that change in the, in the, in the budget. So we're looking for ways to reengage that program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Albert.
Again, questions for Councilmember Sage. So what will, you said it doubled, so I'm assuming the plaques are now $300. So what would the resident pay and what would the historical society commission pay?
Uh, the resident would pay 150 and we would pay 150.
But I thought you said they were sort of pushing back against that. Do you want to do something?
They were pushing back on paying the 300, right?
They had to pay the full thing.
The full thing.
Okay.
Whereas before, we used to have a 50-50 subsidy.
Okay. So do you think at 150 each that the you, they will be more receptive to it?
Absolutely.
And I would just say that if that extra $2,000 which I would support should be sort of earmarked for those plaques so that it doesn't slide into some, another, another uh, fun part.
We agree.
That would just be part of the motion. Do you need to make the motion or did you make it?
Well, we haven't, we, we haven't had a motion yet.
Okay.
For the entire budget.
Is there other comment?
If we're ready for that part, or do we have enough questions? Okay. Um, so regarding the budget, um, I support this Rochester ready budget. I like the branding, as Councilmember Trent says. This is a budget that we're not increasing tax rates and it's a three-year balanced budget, so balanced budgets are good. Um, we are legislatively only approving the single, the first year of the budget. Next two years really are forecast, but it's great to see them all balanced. Um, this maintains our spending less than revenues as well as our general fund balance um, within policy. So 7.4 million dollars is 46% of our 2024 expenditures. The majority of our revenues come from property taxes, which are up, which if you're a property owner, that means our tax bills are going up, but that is due to Headley. Um, and as uh, the treasurer said, there's no rollback on Headley. Um, it is capped at 5% for residents. Um, but some of our tax dollars have gone up because of the pop-up or when there's properties that sell, those values are higher, that's more tax revenue for the city. Um, our expenses are less, so revenues are up, expenses are less. Um, some of, that's 2.4%. Some of those are due to one-time events as well as the uh, elimination of the OPC transit um, cost to the city. That's covered in the Oakland Village. So I wanted to thank everyone for these fantastic top line and bottom line numbers. There's a lot of hard work, you know, as you said, starting back in September to start putting together this budget. We are continuing our infrastructure plan, which is important. And yet there are still, there's still a lot of work to be done. There are things that are not funded in this budget. There are infrastructure projects that are coming. There are facilities projects that need to be funded. Um, so we do need to continue to work to get grant money. I think that will continue to be a big goal for the next few years and look for those opportunities. The last thing I want to comment on was some of the goals um, that you discussed. Um, I read all of them. Um, and I I do appreciate the highlights in terms of succession planning, uh, the employee, employee wellness programs. I think that's important because that helps us keep our costs low, specifically with healthcare. Um, there's a really fun one in there about increasing our pet-friendly green spaces within the city.
Yeah, that's right.
As well as a lot of focus on automation, um, to make it easier for our residents to complete their transactions from business licenses to rental registrations, et cetera. So really important focus for the year ahead and overall, I'd just like to say, great work by everyone. Uh, it was truly a very smooth year in this budget process. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the um, budget as presented, including the resolution, resolution that maintains the village at the current rates, um, with the addition of as presented for um, historical commission and Rochester Hills Museum.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Further discussion? I'd just like to make a couple of comments, um, brief ones. First, want to thank Anthony, Marcy, the entire staff for their job well done. Thank you, the council, a lot of hard work, a lot of collaboration, um, for a very, I think, effective budget. Another thing is the budget was balanced. It's been balanced every year that all of us have been here. It's been balanced every year that I've been here, so that's a lot of budgets. And that's, I think, a core value of this city council is that we balance our budgets. Taxes have not gone up. Um, I think that's very important. Our tax rate is very low, some of the lowest in Oakland County, and that's, I think, right where this city council wants them. I think the budget reflects our values of maintaining our infrastructure, spending money on police and fire and protection and, you know, city services. So I think it really reflects our be, our values. And finally, I think the fiscal restraint that this council has shown really sets us up for future city councils, for future activities that we have. So all in all, I think this is an excellent budget that I'm proud to support. So Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you. Pat, good to see you. Thank you. Next is a public hearing for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, Article 21, supplementary district regulation, section 2115, special projects approval standards to clarify the applicability of special projects' boundary areas. Mr. City Manager, that's a mouthful.
It is, and and council, I'll thank you. Attorney Krotz is going to go over the actual ordinance itself. Uh, we worked this, this problem-solving ordinance um, into a, through our master plan process. As we went through, we found this, as Vidya put it, a Scribner's error that we feel that in order for us to equitably treat all properties the same in this town, we had a couple of properties in town that for some reason, and we we know why, actually, it's the old railroad line and and one of them, uh, and there was another one that was a property transfer that cut a certain project owned by the same building, I'm sorry, by the same owners, it cut the project in half. And if we truly are going to support special projects, they couldn't do that. It it hamstrung. So this wasn't to make it easy for anybody. All the safety controls are still here. So any commission would have to analyze, why are you asking for a special project? It's got a series of um, baselines that you have and benchmarks that you have to uh, be able to satisfy to get there, then to city council, being the final say in special projects. So this will help us um, treat all the properties the same as we go through the process. And Jeff, if you want to go over the ordinance a bit?
Sure, if I may.
City Attorney?
Yes, so before you is the same uh, ordinance that you considered at your April 10, 2023 meeting. As uh, Mr. Brando explained then and now, uh, this is a, a, an opportunity to allow property owners of properties that are adjacent to the special projects' boundary line to seek special uh, project, project consideration. And what that means is they can apply for it, no matter who, if you're in or out of, I mean, if you're in the district, you always have to have city council approval in the end after going through the uh, planning commission gauntlet. So uh, this is not automatic allowing people to do whatever they want to on adjacent properties. It just allows them to ask for this. So uh, this city council did set today for the public hearing. Uh, at the conclusion of the public hearing, if city council wishes to move forward, the appropriate action would be to move it to the ordinance amendment for first reading and introduction after conducting the uh, public hearing.
Very good. Questions, council? Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, just a quick question. So is it, if you, um, with equal protection under the law, is it like you could give one person approval on special project? Would you have to go through a lot of, well, rigmarole to try to explain why you did one and not another? Or does that set us up to one special project got through and then a lot of questioning why the next one doesn't because of the constitution of equal protection under the law? Maybe the 14th amendment?
Mr. City Attorney, I mean, that question's come up before.
It certainly has and and that's a fair question. Um, the, uh, this is a discretionary um, ordinance, which uh, the cities are allowed to do. Um, obviously, you know, the, each project is going to be different and I think planning commission, then city council goes through and explains the merits of each case that comes before it. Um, so I don't think that there's a, uh, especially when you're dealing with property land, that there's, it's very hard to say that I'm in the exact same spot as someone else, so you should do the same. Now, that does say, you know, we do get those questions of, well, uh, we did, we do, we did approve this one, uh, this is similar, but we don't actually hear too much of, you you have to let me do that because you let that person do that. Each of these projects are so different, um, and the the records that are made, I I don't, I haven't experienced concern with with that. Uh, there aren't that many special projects that come before uh, the city. Um, and there, it is quite vetted, um, and individualized. So I, I, that's a great question, but I I don't have that concern based on what I've seen over the last 14 years.
Okay.
Okay, so at 7:46, we will open the public hearing. Are there any comments on this amendment? At 7:46, we will close the public hearing. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to move this forward for first reading and introduction.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, Article 28, screen walls and woodland protection, section 2807, dumpster and trough storage enclosures to amend the language regarding trash enclosure materials. Mr. City Manager, we went over this pretty thoroughly last time. Any further comments?
No change, just trying to fix a problem that Vidya's had, trying to be consistent so that we would have the latitude at the planning commission to um, make sure that we can treat each property fairly with materials on dumpster enclosures, but we will still require dumpster enclosures with gates, proper protection. So it's not, this isn't giving waivers, it's just making it so they can have materials that are like their building.
Further comments from the city manager? We will open the public hearing at 7:48. Is there any public comment on trash things? At 7:48, we will close the public hearing. Council. Councilmember Albrecht.
Having dealt with these trash enclosures on the DDA and now on city council, I thought when this was presented at the last meeting that this was a very um, good solution to uh, to a situation and and I'd like to make a motion to uh, move this ordinance to, for public hearing, uh, for first reading and introduction.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.[1700.65]
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on to legislative deliberation. Is it consider acceptance of a liquor license application for Bitter Tom's tasting room at 319 Main Street?
Chief's on this one.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So a little bit different than our usual Class C liquor license establishment. This is an establishment that's requesting a tasting room license for distilled spirits. So Mr. Bosley, who, Tom Bosley, there's for the Bitter Toms, which will be the name of the establishment, has applied for a license to serve distilled spirits that are made in his manufacturing facility in Rochester Hills at this location. So we did our traditional background check on Mr. Bosley, as well as the other two partners in the business, found nothing of concern in background checks of state, local, and federal databases and such. So we also checked with an establishment that he has in Lake Orion. We checked with the Lake Orion Police Department there to see if they had any concerns about the establishment that's being run there. And they've found it to be well-run and have no issues with the police department or the downtown area there. I'm very pleased with the activity that happens at that location. So the purpose of today's event is for us to accept the liquor license application and then formally set a public hearing that would be set for June 12th, and that'll allow us to have the 15-day notice. Mr. Bosley was unfortunately unavailable to attend tonight's meeting, but he assures me that for sure he will be here on the 12th to answer any questions that you may have about the particular establishment and how that will proceed.
Councilman Gould.
Thank you, sir. Chief, how long has the establishment been open in Lake Orion?
I don't know that.
Two years.
Two years.
Two years, okay, great. Thank you.
Two years. Councilmember Albrecht.
Where is 319 Main? And I was looking at the square, I Googled it.
Pamela's.
Antiques by Pamela.
Oh, okay.
And it shows that the square footage is like 1,200 square feet, but the building is 2,200. I'm not a good square footage person, but how many people would be able to be in a building that size, Chief? In the bar, I guess.
That's a fire, good fire, Chief, question. Not a lot, to be honest with you.
I think it's 45, 45, the way they have it set up.
Yeah.
Forty-five.
I guess that's, in essence, what the establishment is for. It's very small and intimate type tasting rather than, you know, a common bar-type location.
Thank you.
Council? Would, Mayor Pro Tem Salvia?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for, to consider the acceptance of a liquor license for Bitter Toms for June 12th.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, support by Councilmember Sage. Gould, be me to it. Councilmember Gould, you want in on Bitter Toms?
Give that one to.
One quick discussion on it. I have heard that Pamela's is still staying in town. You know, we all love our downtown businesses, so we're not losing a business. Where is she consolidating into? Kristi?
I think Kristi, you know.
Soul Sisters, that's right.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Next on to reports from regular businesses, mayor nominations to boards and commissions. I have a number of them tonight. There was a couple that I couldn't get a hold of, so they'll have to wait till next. So first, the Bronfield Redevelopment Authority. I appoint Scott Ronan to the board. The Cemetery Advisory Board, Jack and Beth DeFranco. I think I said last time, a couple that stays on the cemetery committee stays together. City Beautiful, Rachel Williams and Tammy Byers. Compensation Committee, Jana Yazek. Downtown Development, Ben Giovinelli, Eric Diana, and Tanya Carston. Historical Commission, there's some that aren't on this list that Councilmember Sage sent me today. So we have Lynn Anderson, Gail Bothwell, Don Sinkowitz, Matt Sur, and Si Servinia. So there's a couple more on there. There were some dates that were a little confusing on there. Planning Commission, Sarah King, Christian Hauser, and Eric Lord. All those, Eric Lord is a renewal as well. Principal Shopping District, Kevin Stewart, and Jill Lutz. And, oh, I have ZB, ZBA, is that?
It's our city.
That's the council.
All the ones. And then we have Bob Leidl as the poet laureate. We're pointing him again. He was, his term as poet laureate is up. He would like to be reappointed, and I would appoint him to that position. So that's what I have for tonight. So next, we have city council nominations for boards and commissions. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. For zoning board of appeals, I'd like to nominate Dennis Fleming, Cody Smith, William Thomas, and Frederick Van Damme. Those are all renewals. And just wanted to note that we still have two openings on the board of ethics. We need people for board of ethics.
And we're still short on, you know, if you saw, there's still some commissions that need, need some people. So I think it's incumbent upon all of us to continue to look for people. So Madam Clerk, could you get us that list of people that I nominated and the council nominated and get it to us?
Yes.
The next meeting. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the request for confirmation of the police chief appointment. So our process was Chief Shettenhelm let us know that he was going to be retiring, and we started a process to look for a new director or a new police chief. I think the process was pretty robust, and we had the city manager, we had the police chief, and we had our HR Director, Joel, involved in the process. So it is a city manager choice that has to be confirmed by the city council. So I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, sorry to see Chief Steve go, obviously. This was a, I think you put it well, Mr. Mayor, robust, but also for us three, I think, grueling. Especially, I'm gonna just lay this out, especially we had an internal candidate. It means the world to me that our lieutenant's sitting right there next to our nominee tonight. That's, that's huge. The project, we had, I think, 23, Joel, 23, yep, appoint, candidates that applied, outstanding base of people. A lot of the jobs you're looking for now, you don't seem to get it, and we were rather shocked at the level of people. We did our best internally. We went down, went through every single one, spent hours and hours, got it down to four. All unbelievably incredible careers, including our own Lieutenant Harper. They went through a, it was a grueling day, but leading up to that day, the homework they had to do and all the things they had to do for mental exercises and organizational exercise, the AMCO process, I was amazed at. We spent a lot of time with the leadership of that group, where they sat down with me personally, because it would be my ultimate recommendation, to know what do I think this body and this community deserves and characteristics of the next chief of police. Easy to say you can't fill big shoes. Chief says that all the time. We all say that, but we still had to move on. So we had to decide what was important to us. And they wanted to make sure when they set up their exercises for the four gentlemen that went through this, that it was to prove a point, to pick the best candidate that we could. And they all were outstanding, made it extremely difficult. My candidate tonight is Mr. George Roehib, Roehib, I always say Roehib, Roehib. His background, you see his resume, his cover letter, and my cover letter in your packet this evening. The credentials that the man has, background checks, whether it was through Joel, myself, other officers in this town, everybody went at as hard as they can. It's such an important job. It's such a statement of who you are as a community, who's the chief of police. It's a, it's the face of the city. One mistake, and we're all in a lot of trouble. And that made it extremely difficult. Knowing we have an incredible staff, including Lieutenant Harper, that are there, that if we continue to keep up the pace we're doing, that Steve is set for us, Chief Steve is set for us, I don't think we can go wrong. I was convinced that Mr. Roehib is that person. I think his experience, he's been in, in the trenches. I know that. His family is from here. He is moving to Lake Orion and building a home, which good luck with that. I told him it's real fun to do that. But I believe he is the right person for us to work with his team, share his knowledge and experience of what he's done in his career to make our folks even more ready. We know in succession planning, and Mayor Pro Tem, you said that's important in the budget, we're going to have some of that quickly coming up in the department. How do we handle that? You want somebody that understands that process and know how do you backfill to get to the point where we can just pick internally or do the right thing as we go from, whether it's a detective to a patrolman, a patrolman to a sergeant to a lieutenant, et cetera. That is extremely important. You have to have the right backbone for that. I believe this candidate is the right man to lead the ship, and my recommendation is for council to confirm my nomination of George Roehib for chief of police.
Thank you. Very good. Council? Do we?
Are we going to hear from?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. George, do you want to come up?
Roehib, correct?
I asked him why it can't be Roehib, and he said blame my dad, so.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure being here tonight. What would you like to know? I'll tell you anything. I'm an open book.
Well, why don't you tell us why you were interested in this job?
Well, I'll tell you, this was, I've been in this business, this is my 37th year. And out of the 37 year I spent as chief for two different organizations for 17, I worked myself up the ranks. I've done every, I worked every facet of law enforcement. I've been part of just about every program you can think of. A big component of drug education. I brought a lot of programs in both departments for drug education, neighborhood watch groups, things of that nature. This is a dream job. This is a dream opportunity for me. There's not many jobs like this will open up, especially a community like this, with a team like this, a team like that. I mean, I have no, this is one of the quietest council meetings I've ever been to in all my years as a chief. It's just the team. Mr. Banda's been an absolute gentleman to me, and Ms. Haynes treated me nothing but respect. I have Lieutenant Harper, I mean, just like Mr. Banda said, I have a lieutenant sitting next to me. His support means everything to me. And Chief Shettenhelm, we've talked a few times, great guy. He does, there are some big shoes to fill, and he's going to leave his legacy here. I will build on that legacy if I'm approved here. And one thing you can, you know, you can do your homework on George Roehib. I will, I'll give you 120% every single day. I love working. I don't have to work. I choose to work. I think I've been put on earth to do this kind of job. I love dealing with people. That's my biggest skill, is the way I communicate with people and connect with people. I make people feel very comfortable. And you'll see, I know it's hard because I'm new coming in, you know, it's going to take some time to build trust and respect. But I assure you, you're going to get that from me, and I'm going to get that from you. It's, I'm so excited about this. You know, in my interview, I said, my wife and I were across the street. We were going to walk on the trail about a year ago. And my wife goes, wouldn't it be cool if you could be the chief in that community? I said, there's no way the chief's leaving that community. And here I am, a year, a year ago, just about a year ago today. So, you know, hopefully miracles do happen. But yes, I mean, this is, this is a wonderful community. The reputation is stellar here. I have a lot of friends that live here. We're moving close by here. We spend a lot of time downtown here, especially Christmas time. But I would love to be part of your team here, and I will give you everything that I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
If you want to live in Rochester, I have a house for sale. Save you from building a house in Lake Orion. You'd make my day, and then you got my vote. No, I'm.
He has a water view.
I got water view. You're closer to City Hall. No, first off, I wanted to thank Joel and Chief Shettenhelm and Nick for overseeing this process. You know, when we were shown the process and this whole, what is it, AMCO or whatever it was, I just said, whoa, I would, I would never become police chief if I went through it. But secondly, to hear 23 candidates down to four, including our internal Lieutenant Harper, and meeting you, and again, you know, I've looked at your background and support the process, support the decision. I guess there's, there was three things that I really wanted to ask you, or just would be my request as a resident and a city council person, which is, you're right, you're filling big shoes. And I talked to the chief today, and when I always describe Chief Shettenhelm, well, first, let me, as I told you earlier, I grew up in East Detroit, which is now East Point, and the East Detroit I grew up with is not the East Point that it is today. So the, what a police chief does in East Point versus a police chief in Rochester are unfortunately night and day these days. And one of, one of the things that I've always commended the chief on and his staff, all of them, is our community focus. You know, we, they are to serve and protect, and we know that if things go bump in the night, that our, our police staff is, our police force is going to be there, along with our fire department and everything else like that. But it's the little things that they do on the community focus, and I think that comes from the chief, and it trickles down through the whole, whole organization. I bring my grandkids to the open house every spring. You know, when we had the pride parade a few years ago, you know, where other communities were pushing back, the chief and his staff were out there with water bottles and signs welcoming the people to, to our community. Just those little small things that, that we do as a, as a police force, I hope you'll continue that and improve upon it going forward. Second, everybody knows I'm huge into succession planning. My background is human resources. And I would hope that, you know, you're, you're getting into the sunset of your career at some point in time, and that you would commit to developing Lieutenant Harper and working with him so that if and when you move on, as Chief Shettenhelm does that, he's ready for, for that next, next time, or other people on the staff who want to move up to other levels. Succession planning is very important for this city. We need to show our staff, we need to show our residents that, you know, our people here can, can live and grow within, within the Rochester community. And the third ask is just maintaining a high visibility. What do I mean by that? You know, the chief is here at our city council meetings. He's out in the community. During the Woodward Dream Cruise, he's riding his bike up and down the Woodward Dream Cruise. Any event that goes on in the city, he's there. His staff is there. You know, the music in the park, there's, there's, they've got the little.
Segways.
Segways.
Well, not the segue, the, the thing that drives people around.
TV.
You know, to, to, to get, you know, older people to the thing.
Gators.
Just, again, all, the gator, that's it. All those little things add up. And again, I don't want to, you know, I don't know what's going on in East Point in terms of those three areas, but I know those are very important to me as a resident. They're important to me as a city council person, and I hope you can, you can fill Chief Shettenhelm's shoes and do those things here, because, as you say, it's your dream job. It is a dream community. I love this community, and I hope to welcome you if, if those three, three asks, I don't think are, are out of your skill set.
Absolutely, on all three.
Thank you.
Were there comments?
I have a question.
Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. I would just like to add on Councilmember Albrecht's comments and just really, you know, coming in from outside of the city of Rochester, we're, we're kind of asking you to take on a tough job, a tough job because you're coming in from the outside, not because it's a, it's a tough place to work. We all, we all love our community, as people do in all communities, right? So I'd just like to hear from you a little bit more about how, how are you going to come in and, you know, maybe your first 100 days? What is that going to look like? How are you going to earn all of our love, trust, and respect?
Well, first of all, when you come in, it's all about listening, learning, aligning yourself with the right people, and developing goals and objectives for the department. You know, it's going to be, I'm very good about going in places and assessing, but the key thing is, is to listen to the employees, listen to the council, listen to the residents. And then from there, you can develop a SWOT analysis. You can figure out what you have to do for the next, say, one, three, or five years. But my first 30 days here is basically letting people know who I am. We're going to talk about job expectations, and we're going to figure out what's going right here, what's going wrong, what we can build on, what programs we can implement, what programs we can improve, things of that nature. But it's all about listening and learning to the people that have been here and aligning yourself. I don't plan on coming in here and just making drastic changes. I'm not that way. That's not my personality. I believe in working in team concepts that goes with employee building, because people want to feel valued, and that's what I like to do. I like to make people feel valued. I mentor a lot of people. But listening, learning, taking good notes, and just making adjustments, slow adjustments. And then once I figure out what's going on here, then, then I can make or develop a strategic plan, and we can move forward. But it takes everybody, council, and all the department heads, all the employees on the department, and the community. I'd like to have input from everybody. So that'll take some time, but I can assure you, we will have a good, solid plan to move forward with.
Councilmember Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Roehib.
And thank you, Lieutenant Harper and, uh, Nick and everybody else that, that brought you here. And for all the people that applicant, uh, applied for the position, I think it takes a lot to throw your hat into the ring. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of time. It takes a lot of courage. Uh, so, very much recognized. Uh, leadership is about change. Uh, you don't take a leadership role without, uh, wanting to change something. Councilmember Albrecht, uh, very eloquently stated a lot of things that I also would echo and believe in. But what would success look like to you here? What, what, tell me something that excites you, that you're interested in changing about our community, not, not in a hundred days, but maybe, you know, four or five years down the road. What, what is it that really did it for you?
Well, I, like I said, I, I enjoy working with people, especially my staff, especially the new people coming in. There, there'll be some changes here. You're gonna have people retiring over the years. So it, it's my job to set the tone for the organization, figure out what direction we wanna go to. But constant mentoring of employees, I want people to come and work every day and work in a positive work environment. My job is to give them the tools of the trade, give them the proper education, teach them. You know, commend them on their, uh, the things that they do right and work with them, the things that they're doing wrong. Um, it's all about employee development. As I stated, my leadership style is, um, basically participative management democratic style because I do believe in, uh, developing employees. Um, they wanna feel valued. And the longer, when you have a, a person that feels valued, that helps with succession planning. You know, that's what keeps employees in an organization. Many people leave organizations not because of the money, it's because they don't feel valued. And that's where I come in. And that's where I work with my supervisors and make certain that they have all the tools in the trade. They have all the proper education. I'm big on education. Um, if someone has an associate degree, I push them to get a bachelor's. If they have a bachelor's, I push them to get a master's. It is so important because that's the way we go out and we represent the people in the community. And also being the leader of the organization. My, I'm great with the community. I love those one-on-one, uh, relationships that I've built over the years. I wanna do that here. People will realize as the chief, they can send me a text message. I get it on my phone. I don't care what day of the week it is. I don't care what hour of the night it is. I will return their call within fifteen minutes. That's how I am. I don't wait till the next day. Customer service is number one. I want the people of this community to know that every member of this, uh, police department is there for them at all times and we're rep, represent them in the most professional manner at all times. There's nothing worse than living in fear. There's nothing worse than calling somebody for help or just for a, a simple question and nobody calls you back. There's nothing worse than that. I will make certain that never happens as long as I'm here, so. Um, I like working with the schools. I do a lot of things with the schools. We just, uh, applied for an SRO grant for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. We're putting a full-time officer in our schools. Um, I have a great relationship with the school, especially with drug education and things like that. I belong to different programs like Hope Not Handcuffs. I was one of the founders of Families Against Narcotics. It's a nonprofit organization. I started off because two children died in our community. Now it turns out there's twenty-six chapters in Michigan. Very proud of that. We've helped thousands and thousands of peoples and families. I'd like to bring something like this, this into this community. Yes, it's, uh, it's a beautiful community, but there are people with addiction problems, believe it or not, in this community. And I'm gonna be there to help. And once I get, uh, the hang of things, I'm gonna propose programs. I'm gonna show Mr. Banda what I have here and, you know, hopefully we're all in agreement and, um, which I think you're gonna be impressed with some of the programs I will bring in. And also, I'm, I'm, I love, uh, I have a youth program. If somebody's, um, doesn't know what they wanna do when they grow up, their tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, they come in my office and we talk about law enforcement. I also do fire. I'm a firefighter too. And, um, give them tours of the station, things of that nature. We talk in length. And I, I teach also at McComb College, adjunct professor, so I kinda recruit some of my students too as employees. But, um, you know, I work a lot with youth and, you know, that's what makes a community, working with the youth and, you know, the mentally challenged. I, I deal with a lot of mental illness in my job. Twenty-five percent of my calls are mentally ill people. You know, very diverse community, you know, one of the most diverse communities in the county I work with. And we, we get along great with our residents. They love us because we always have their back and we always support them. I have one of the best neighborhood watch programs. Sometimes they have three hundred people show up at our neighborhood watch meetings. And they just don't wanna learn about safety things. We talk about the department in general. What's going on in the department, not just what's going on breaking into cars. But I think they come for entertainment. But, uh, for the most part, they come and we talk and we learn about each other, you know, personal things. I have, you know, some of the residents, I just had our grandbaby and the residents were knitting blankets. You know, I just thought that was great. And just those little things. But that's what makes a community. Uh, we just started a nonprofit group for, for the people that, they're poor. So during Christmas, we bring them gifts. During the holidays, we take them food to the house. Just little things like that. Yes, little things. Those are some of the little things that I've been involved with. Very proud of it. And, um, we just started a bike, uh, a reserve unit. The reserve officers drive up and down the street and, and bikes. They give out badges to the little kids, things of that nature. We have open houses. But that's how you, and I see here you have a citizens academy. You have the fridge, the fridge out there. I went in there and alarm went off. But, uh, but those are the things, like you said. Those are the things that make a community, just those little things like that. You have the honor guard here. I love it. The motorcycles, great public relations. And, um, I plan, again, I plan on, um, building on that. And, um, there's always room for improvement. And I'm gonna do my best to improve and get everyone on board because that's what a good leader does. And, um, you'll see how we connect with the community. It's gonna be, it's gonna be outstanding. I'm very, I'm very excited.
Thank you.
Here, Pro Tem, uh, House Member Trent.
It's getting late.
Not really.
Long day. Um, yes, um, yeah, I see you went to my alma mater, EMU.
Yes.
I approve. But, um, I see you do have a lot of, um, drug, uh, prevention and drug education, which I think is good. I'm on the, a board of, uh, Rochester area youth assistance, uh, which they deal with that as well. It's a, it's a assistance program that, you know, Pro Tem, Nancy Salvio is on as well. But, um, also they've been talking more, uh, at this, um, board on mental health. It's, um, you know, it's, it's on the rise. And so I was glad that you mentioned that. And maybe there's things that you could, you know, you know, bring programs or, I mean, I know everyone's working on it for youth especially. But, you know, for the residents of the community as well.
And it's important that the officers are trained in mental health because they don't give you much training in a police academy. They just don't. Um, we develop a crisis intervention team. So we have a number of officers that are trained in mental illness. So if we have a call to someone's resident, we know that they're mentally ill, we'll send one of the trained officers because they know how to de-escalate. And we have, also have a chaplain program. I have four chaplains for the department. They're also trained also. And they, sometimes if they're there, they will go on the run. And that helps out tremendously because there, as you know, there's a different way of dealing with people that are mentally challenged. People that have bipolar, you know, things of that nature, so.
That's great. Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? Is there a motion? Mayor Pro Tem.
Do you wanna make a?
You can make it.
Albrecht.
Uh, thank you. Um, uh, again, I, I wanna commend the process. Um, thank you, Lieutenant Harper, for being here. That, that means a lot to us up here. And, uh, and again, as I said in my opening comments, I, I hope that the succession plan and development continues for you because, uh, you're, you're, you're a city treasure and, and I wanna see you continue to grow with the city. Uh, so I'd like to, uh, make a motion to, um, hire, uh, George Rohab, Rohib.
Rohib.
Rohib. I just remembered, Ro and Hib, Rohib as our next police chief, uh, with a start date, uh, in June with a transitional period with Chief Shettenhelm, as presented in the letter from City Manager Nick Banda.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by the Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Any further?
What he said.
Any further questions? So I just, I'd just like to say, we take the safety of our city very important. So this is a very important, um, position in our city. Um, and we're looking forward to having you here, um, and, and continue the great work of Chief Shettenhelm. Just wanna say, Lieutenant Harper, thank you for showing up tonight and showing your support. Really appreciate that. It's, to me, a very classy move, so thank you for that. Um, Mayor Pro Tem, uh. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Welcome to the, our city.
Mister, Mister Mayor, we had talked about if this was successful tonight, that possibly if Mr. Rohib's and his family could join this Wednesday at the State of the City, we're gonna say some stuff about Chief Steve. We could introduce you to the community. If, if you could make it, that'd be great.
Yes.
Lots of, we'll get you as many hours as we can already, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Okay. Uh, next is a receipt of the check register report, if there's any questions. Okay, next we receive a report from the various boards and commission, a report from the historical commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So as we all know, uh, Greater Rochester Heritage Day's approaches. And, uh, we just wanted to follow up on the commission level, uh, whether the five thousand dollar check to Dinosaur Hill was issued and received. Because I think there was some discussion of that at our last meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think we took care of that already, right? Okay, we'll check that. Yeah, they sent the same invoice that we paid.
Okay, so if that invoice has not been received, could you please let me know so I can get to Psy? And, okay. Then the only other thing is, uh, with, uh, Chief Shettenhelm's retirement party on May twenty-fourth?
Fifth.
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 We are moving the historical commission meeting to May twenty-fourth.
Very good. Next is a receipt of a report from the Planning Commission. I will handle that tonight. We had a public hearing and we approved the site plan for Ellie on Main Street, which is next door to the E. O. Building on Highland and Rochester Road. So we approved a very, I think, a very pretty building there and, um, that will look nice along it. It's really similar to the Morgan Stanley Building. So it's a very nice looking building. We approved Blake's Realty on four eleven Main. Their exterior facade for the kind of, it's in the back of, of that. And it's a real estate agency. Uh, we approved outdoor dining for the Rochester Eagles. Um, and we found out that almost everybody in town is an Eagles member.
Yes.
There's a lot of it.
I'm, I'm not in the club. I don't know how it happened.
Literally everybody on the Planning Commission is, is on the.
No.
Oh, except for Dennis McGee. I know you were complaining that we were.
Nancy and I will nominate you.
Um, and then we had a request from the community house to put their tent, their tent up for a second year. Um, and that was approved because that was business that was already built. So we were gonna put that up for the year and then hopefully there'll be changes into the future there, but so, so that went up. So that's what happened at the Planning Commission. Next is a report from the principal shopping district. Councilmember Gould.
All right. So we met on May third and we discussed, uh, the downtown Rochester sidewalk sales. Thursday, July thirteenth and July fourteenth from, uh, ten to nine is the plan. Saturday, July fifteenth from ten to six. Chief Financial Credit Unit is sponsoring it. Uh, again, they'll have kids craft and things. I think we're well familiar with the sidewalk sales. We discussed dancing in the street. Friday, July fourteenth from six to ten, um, on West Fourth Street. Uh, we have a new band, Your Generation, which apparently has a very big following. And is supposed to be very good. I have not had the pleasure of hearing them. Uh, there'll be a taste fest featuring downtown eateries and they are seeking a beverage sponsor, uh, to potentially serve alcohol at the event. Uh, we discussed the budget. We discussed the front porch, town square projects. I think, um, we were well familiar with that from the last council meeting. Pretty exciting. Uh, we discussed social districts, which, uh, I wasn't aware, we already didn't have this, but, uh, this is essentially an open carry area in the, along, uh, Main Street, which is extremely popular right now and cities all over the place, so, uh, we're, that's being discussed right now. I did wanna remind everybody, I think the DDA folks are gonna do this, but I'll remind anyway. There are open sessions for feedback to the, from the public on the front porch project on May thirty-first and June fifth. Two more things, maybe three. Uh, deck art is this week, May eleventh, uh, starting at five. On May twelfth, there are over three hundred, uh, decks. There's golden ticket for seventy-five bucks on the back of one or two of them. There's an artist reception on both nights. We already had the farmer's market opening. Uh, June first, no filter, at the Downtown Collaboration Studio. Fifty cameras will be fifty prints, uh, up through the month of June. And June first is an artist reception for that. On June twenty-fourth, Makers Market on West Fourth Street with about forty-five vendors from ten to four. That's very exciting. That's right by my house. Looking forward to that. And, uh, they're still looking for artists and musicians for the event, I believe. So that's it.
Very good.
Thank you.
I would just say, and I think Councilmember Albrecht would agree with me, that Your Generation Band that is gonna play is awfully good. Very good. So we thank Christie for that one. We're Christian team.
They are good. They are very good.
They are very good.
Good choice.
Uh, next is a, is a report from the Downtown Development Authority. We did have a special meeting, um, and we chose a moderator for the community input session facilitation. Um, we had two bids for that. And then we also chose, uh, a construction manager, not for the building of it, but to just do the pricing. And, uh, that was Frank Rewalden Associates. So that's what occurred at that meeting. It's just two agenda items for that. Um, next on to public comment. Is there any, anybody would like to speak? Pat, come on up. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Pat Kane, eight seventeen, West Fourth Street. Couple of things, a little bit of humor first. Uh, Councilmember Albrecht, uh, addressed when our new police chief, George Rohib, said he had thirty-seven years being an officer. And Mark did the right thing. He said, you know, thirty-seven years, sunset of your career, in talking about succession. Mark, thank you. He may have thirty-seven in healthcare. I have fit or in law enforcement. I have fifty-two in healthcare and you've never said that to me yet. So that's kind of good news. Um, next, um, it was mentioned by, um, Chief Rohib that he never thought he would be a police chief here in Rochester. It would take a miracle. It doesn't. It takes persistence. Nick never said he'd be city manager, didn't want it. And I kept after and after and we kept doing things and look where he ended up. City manager. So things do happen for the good and things do happen to help. Welcome to the community. I think if there were more residents here, uh, this evening, that they would also extend, uh, a warm welcome. Having seen everything from top to bottom in that department, starting way back with the four-eight-three-zero-seven and the Save Our Police, it's sad that what came of all that is going to be leaving. Best thing that happened to that department, that department was a mess. Our officers put it together along with our chief Shettenhelm. So big shoes to fill because that goes back a long time in coming. So I just wanna take the opportunity to welcome you and let you know that you've got a great wingman. You've got a great department and it's a great community that will stand behind you. So you'll have all the chances. Sad to see him go, and I'm only going to say this publicly because you're gonna hear it privately. The only thing the chief ever failed on was the two mounted horses officers. So, you know what, five years, six years, eight years, there's still time to get those two in here and some land, okay? But welcome aboard.
My hand to put him on.
Thank you, Pat. That's it, Pat. Uh, Brian, anybody else?
I, I don't see anyone with their hand, uh, rose. I just saw Councilmember Peterson just join though.
Councilmember Peterson, do you wanna? Okay. Uh, Monta General, uh, miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, if you've noticed, uh, activity at the elevator, you see the big eagle sign that's up. Um, that was part of the grant. That we received the one million dollars to clean it up. They're systematically going through. They had some. They're systematically going through, they had some historians go through the old barn looking at what could be salvaged, what can be reused. That probably won't be touched any further until we get to the planning commission so everybody can see what the actual plan is for the rehab, rehabilitation of a portion of the elevator. The other part of the site's pretty much cleaned up, the blue building will probably come down, consumers was there disconnecting the only gas line there, believe it or not, the red, elevator didn't have water, gas, anything, it was crazy. People didn't know that, but, so they'll continue work there. And second, take a second to go on the Roxy's website and look at who they are planning to bring to our community for entertainment, from dueling pianos to comedians, country stars, a lot of, Christie, what do you call that, knockoff band, what do they call it? Tribute bands. I saw Shania Twain, I, I saw things, you know, Van Halen guys, stuff like that, so I think, no, they called her, this one was Shania Twain. So it's the knockoff folks. Yeah, there are a lot of cover bands, is what I'm trying to say, tribute bands. There you go. Yeah, tribute, okay. So I think he's got the connections, he's getting excited, we'll be ready for Chief's party and it's already taking great, it looks great, you can see it's painted already, they took, take, took care of that. The parking lot will be the last thing gets done, they want all the heavy equipment in there to get done and then that will get done, unrefurbished. So we're excited about that. Thank you Jason for getting all the parking decks out for the DDA, they're out, chairs on 90% of them are ready. Now we gave them 30 days to use them or lose them and then they can pay us to take them back, but I don't think that's going to happen, so we're excited about that also. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Just a reminder that 8:00 AM on Memorial Day is our event at the cemetery. I think we've come up with a great program. I'll, I'll update that and we'll send it out to all of council by this week.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, just really quickly, I think probably most of us went to the farmer's market, was awesome, had a great time. Christie, Jenna, Taylor, that was, is just, it just makes me so happy and, and so proud to be a citizen of Rochester at events like that. It was such a great turnout. I haven't heard a bad word about it. I also wanted to thank folks for the budget. I'm not a financial guy. I do have a budget where I work and everything, but to, to make such a complex budget with so many moving parts is simple to understand. Many thanks to Nick and Anthony and Marcy for that because I read through it, I didn't have any questions, it's very clear, it's logical, it makes sense. I, I, I diluted myself and I'm thinking, maybe you didn't dumb it down too much and I actually understood what was going on, so I do appreciate those efforts. But, once again, to echo everybody, congratulations on retirement to the chief and welcome Chief Rohib.
Mayor Protam Salvio?
Thank you, thank you. So on that beautiful Friday this past weekend, I was out on about, Christie gave me an assignment to take some pictures, doing my little, little Instamatic camera. I did kind of go through the community garden. I was kind of hoping we were going to have some signs up at the community garden, when you, if you don't know that it's the community garden, you don't know what it is. So I, I think Marcy was working on that and now that we're through the budget, maybe we can get some signage going on at the community garden. Also was hoping to hear an update at some point in time from Treasure Maggio regarding the, I think it's called Nakra, North Oakland Recycling Trash Something Project that we may be working on, so I think that would be good to hear some updates on that. And welcome Chief George and can't wait to have you fully onboard here in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Two things. One, we had our Memorial Day Parade Committee just before this meeting and so we continue to get sponsorships, those will end this week. We are also going to have, we'll all be marching in the parade this year and passing out 500 flags instead of 300 last time, just based on what we had. We finalized the agenda, the only thing still in flux is we're trying to arrange for a flyover from Selfridge Air Force Base, so hopefully that'll come to fruition. So fingers crossed on that. I just had one of my most, the proudest moments as a city council person was the Thursday before Arbor Day and I'm glad we picked Thursday because it was a sunny, beautiful day and Friday when I was on a plane to California, it was raining to beat the bands, but I talked about this last meeting, we did it at Holy Family Regional School, North Campus, the smile, you know, and thanks to the DPW who came out there and dug the hole and brought the dirt and the mulch and everything else, thanks to the fire department that were there with the fire truck, with the, the hose, thanks to the tree committee and then, you know, Nick was there, Marilyn was there, Nancy was there, Rachel from City Beautiful, myself. Just a great ceremony and these, these third graders had like 100 questions, we could have been there all afternoon, but they knew their trees, they knew the state tree. But I took a plethora of pictures and sent them into the people who were in attendance and a couple of the local papers have, have picked, picked that up. But, you know, we, the last three years, we had done the cemetery twice and municipal park, but this was the best ever, just the smiles on the kids and, and thanks to Nick, we were able to pivot and get 105 saplings of, of white pines that each of the kids took home and they carried those things like they were carrying an egg. They were just so proud of it and they were asking questions of, when can I plant them? What do I do? How much dirt do I put in it? Everything else. So a, a great, great, great event and thank you for the Holy Family Administration, the third grade teachers, there were four classes, 102 students, so it was just a wonderful day on all aspects. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, just a couple of things. That was a wonderful event. I really enjoyed myself, the tree committee and city worked so hard on that. And thank you for giving away white pines, a Michigan native tree. So that's a kudos to you. The other thing I'd like to do is thank the Kiwanis Club of Rochester Holding Music in the Park, again, free for seven Thursdays from June 15th to July 27th in our park band show and it's so beautiful and sometimes when I'm jogging by, I hear it too, just, I don't always make it, I have to say, but I, I love it when I'm jogging by on the trail.
Very good. Thank you. Just Wednesday, May 10th is the State of the City and I just want to thank Nick, Marcy and Holly for helping and doing a lot of the work to get ready and getting, we had someone donate the desserts and things like that, so it was a really nice thing and should be fun and it, the speech is pretty short.
Good.
So I can promise that in advance. So we are now going to go into a request for a closed session. Do we anticipate coming out? We do. So we anticipate coming out to have a public vote in, in theory if we choose to. So we need a motion for that.
Make a motion to go into closed session with the intent to return.
Motion by the Mayor Protam. Support. Walked by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvio?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
So we'll take a five-minute break and then go into closed session. Thank you. Nick?
Yes, sir.
Do we want the new? Open session, so Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvio?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
And Peterson's still absent.
So I will recognize Mayor Protam Salvio.
Thank you, yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the TA signed by city management and the Police Officers Labor Council Union Leadership dated 5/2/2023 as presented in closed session.
Support. Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvio?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. And then does that get published, what the terms are? Or is that what we voted on?
In closed session.
The next thing that will get published is actually the whole contract. No, it's the contract.
Right. It's just a clerical thing after that, you don't approve anything else.
Very good.